I recall the Patent Township Board of Supervisors March 23, 2022, meeting at 5:32 to order. Okay, welcome all, especially new Patent Township residents to the Patent Township community, a place for all. As our March 3, 2022 meeting was canceled, we will address all of these issues along with issues on tonight's agenda. Before we continue, can I, can we get a moment of silence in memory of Clifford Wilson, Patent Township, Croissant Guard, who served the community from 2008 to 2022? Thank you. A memorial from the Patent Township will be sent to the family. As you are able, please rise and join the board with the pleasure of allegiance.
Our pleasure allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, additions to the posted agenda. Are there any supervisors that would like to add an item to the agenda at this time? Okay, Doug?
No ma'am.
All right, seeing none. Moving on to public comments. Residents and taxpayers may address the board on issues of interest to the township. Comments related to Pacific agenda should be deferred until that point of the meeting. If you are attending by Zoom, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom application and wait for the chair to indicate it is your opportunity to speak. If you are attending in person, please approach the podium and wait for the chair to indicate that it is your opportunity to speak. Public comments are limited to five minutes per person. Are there any public comments at this time? Good afternoon, sir.
Good evening.
Did you give your name?
I am Richard Marr, 1869 Park Forest Avenue in the Village. The subject tonight that I want to speak of to the board is damage to personal property and possibly criminal interference with residents to clear their snow from sidewalks. I ask indulgence for the next five minutes, and my remarks are PG rated, be assured. First, I have two questions. If I see damage to personal property in my neighborhood, Park Forest Village, should I call the police? Should I call the township office? And after I clear my sidewalk of snow and someone else comes along and deposits their snow on my sidewalk, is this a matter for the police? Should I call them? Anything? Okay. I have two specific dates in mind, December 16, 2020, and March 12 of this year, 2022. December 2020, it was a day to remember. There was 12 to 14 inches of snow, starting around 10:00 a.m. in the morning, going to midnight. Snow was falling at 1 to 2 inches an hour. Snowplows were making their rounds, but were concentrating on the major roads, of course. By my recollection, Township's snowplow was clearing Park Forest Avenue, my road, about every few hours. However, some of the side streets were not being cleared as frequently. Specifically, Norwood Lane, Laurel Lane, and even North Oak Lane. I understand that there were priorities. But from what I and others recall, the Township's snowplow cleared those streets around 2:00 in the afternoon. The next time the plow came through was about 9:30, 10:00. I know this for a fact because I was out and I witnessed it. I was out between 8:00 and 9:00 clearing snow off the 1800 block of Park Forest Avenue and Laurel Lane. So with the snowfall at about 1 or 2 inches per hour, and the snow on the road surface of Laurel Lane at about 9:30, 10:00, it was easily 7 inches. Remembered, it hadn't been cleared in 7 hours. So when the snow called snowplow showed up to clear Laurel Lane and the other streets, it was noteworthy. And I say it was a so-called snowplow because it was a backhoe machine equipped with a 9-foot orange blade on the front. I think in the process of clearing the snow, excessive speed was used. To the extent, nearly every mailbox on Laurel Lane was knocked off its post. And in two cases, the posts were broken off at their bases. This was not a situation where the blade came in contact with the mailboxes or the posts. Rather, this was the case of the snow being thrown with such force that it broke off mailboxes and the posts. According to one resident who I talked to the next day, whose mailbox and post were thrown from the curb onto her sidewalk, a distance of 10 or 12 feet. She says, "I've lived here for 57 years. I've never seen anything like it." Mailboxes and posts were also damaged on North Oak Lane and Norwood Lane, from what I understand. The township has a record of all this. Residents know that if they call the township office, mailboxes and posts that were damaged will be replaced. Well, let me correct that. Just calling the township is not enough. The resident needs to fill out a form and submit it before action is taken, which could take days. Okay, let's talk about this year, the snowfall of two weeks ago, March 12. It was about 4 or 5 inches. It was a heavy snow. Because of that, I was out with my snowblower, and I decided to keep going around the block, clearing the snow on one side of North Oak Lane and around onto Laurel Lane. The snow had stopped about 1:00 p.m. About 1 hour later, about around 2:00, two snowplows appeared in this part of the neighborhood. When they came down Laurel Lane, they cleared that street's snow up to the curb, but didn't throw any snow onto the sidewalk. However, when they turned and continued onto North Oak Lane and they cleared that snow, it was thrown onto the sidewalk. Now fortunately, I was able to flag down one of the drivers, and we had a conversation. First, I told him what I thought of his actions, and he said, "I'm doing what my boss instructed me to do. There's a hard freeze coming tonight, and we need to clear the snow from the street up to the curb so that people can park their cars here later." And I said, "That sounds reasonable, but you're saying you have a boss that allows you to race up and down the street, throwing the effin' snow from the effin' street onto the effin' sidewalk that I just effin' cleared with my little effin' snowblower? Wow, I'd like to meet your boss." Unfortunately, I did not get the driver's name or the boss's name, but I think I know who the boss's boss might be. In any event, how do we resolve this to the satisfaction of the township and their streets and to the satisfaction of the residents and their sidewalks? Because remember, Patent Township has a policy. On their website, it states, "It shall be the duty of the owner and the occupiers of properties to cause said paved sidewalks along their respective properties to be cleared of snow and ice and other obstruction within 24 hours after the snow and ice have ceased to fall." As for penalties, any person upon conviction will be sentenced to pay a fine of not less than $35 or more than $1,000, and cost of prosecution and in default of payment of such fine and costs to imprisonment of not more than 90 days. Well, all that sounds pretty serious. Residents are to clear a sidewalk of snow within 24 hours or face penalties, regardless of whether snowplows come along later and deposit more street snow on those same sidewalks after they've been cleared. All right. Another policy. On the United States Postal Service website, it says this. Mailboxes are protected by federal law, and crimes against mailboxes and the mail inside are investigated by postal inspectors. Those who are convicted of destruction of federal property could spend up to three years in jail and be fined up to $250,000. I looked to see if there were any exceptions to this, like damage caused by Township's snowplows. There are no such exemptions listed. Can I ask for an extension? Five minutes are up?
Yes, it is.
Okay. I will submit my printed notes and photographs of Laurel Lane and the mailboxes to the borough office tomorrow. And questions or comments?
We thank you for your comments, and we will definitely look into that. If you would be so kind to give some of the information you've just read in the comments and to our township manager.
I will.
And our board will definitely review it as well.
Well, he need a copy tonight's.
If you have it. If you don't, please forward it to our township, and we will definitely look into it.
I would like to do that tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you, sir, and thank you for your time. Any other public comments? Okay. Seeing none. Next on our agenda is the presentations, public hearing. And the first on the agenda is Women's History Month Proclamation. I have asked Supervisor Torino to read the proclamation. The proclamation was scheduled to be presented at the March 3 Board of Supervisors meeting that was canceled, so tonight, with the consensus of the board, the proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month will be read and voted on. Supervisor Torino?
Yes, thank you. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Patent Township recognizes the month of March as Women's History Month, established in 1987 by Congress to celebrate and affirm the important contributions American women have made to the nation; and whereas American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also at the forefront of every major progressive social change movement in history, paving the way for future generations; and whereas countless women, most of them forgotten to history, sacrificed and worked tirelessly for equality with the vision, action, and determination for the next generation of women and girls; and whereas each woman is extraordinary in her own way, women of every age, race, ethnicity, and economic background have made historic and significant contributions, providing that women working in science, technology, business, labor, education, governance, and more maintain a critical role in every segment of society; and whereas the theme of Women's History Month of 2022 is women providing, yes, women providing healing, promoting hope. This theme is both a tribute to the ceaseless work of caregivers and frontline medical doctors, nurses, medical technicians, and all workers during the ongoing pandemic, also recognizing the thousands of ways that women of all cultures have provided healing, care, and hope throughout history, especially during COVID-19 pandemic; and whereas Women's History Month is a milestone that will continue with the next generation of extraordinary women and girls, a legacy of many women who were denied the right of freedom and equality, in which many suffered and others paid the ultimate price. We stand on the shoulders of those courageous women with pride, dedication, gratitude, and a sense of purpose. Now therefore, our Patent Township Board of Supervisors do hereby recognize March as Women's History Month, honoring the contributions made by women everywhere for their outstanding achievements and invaluable contributions to society."
Thank you Supervisor Torino. Can I get a motion to approve this proclamation recognizing March as Women's History Month?
So moved.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second that thing.
Discussion. All in favor say aye.
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 You oppose the extension? The motion passes. Thank you. Moving, next on the agenda is the Police Commendation for Outstanding Service for 2021. Chief Dolly, would you introduce these outstanding officers?
Yes, thank you. So I'd like to, at least once, to recognize the men and women of the Patent Township Police Department. They do fantastic work day in, day out. However, there are certain instances where some of our officers really go above and beyond, and I like to recognize them again once a year here in front of the board with commendations that we have given to our officers. So this year, we have five officers who are being recognized. We have two with us this evening, but first I'd like to talk about the other three. The first is Detective Thomas Snyder. And he was awarded a Police Commendation for 2021 for outstanding service performed in the investigation of a serial assault case. You heard about this recently, just a few months ago when I wasn't here. But just to refresh your memories, Detective Snyder started a criminal investigation after a victim reported a sexual assault that had occurred in a residence in Patent Township. He interviewed the victim and obtained a search warrant for the suspect's residence. He executed a search warrant and gathered evidence that was pertinent to the case. By thoroughly examining the evidence, he determined there was a possibility that there was other victims out there. Through diligent investigation, Detective Snyder identified and interviewed several other victims and obtained and executed additional search warrants to collect evidence. He then obtained an arrest warrant for that suspect. Happy to say that suspect currently is incarcerated, and he's being held on numerous charges, including rape, sexual assault, and strangulation of six victims. So that was the first one that we had. The second one was for Detective Chris Federenko. He also received a Police Commendation for Outstanding Service performed in investigation of narcotics delivery cases in 2021. And again, we have discussed this a little bit, but just over the past two years, Detective Federenko, in his role as a narcotics detective, has contributed greatly to reduce the flow of illegal narcotics and controlled substances in the center region. In that timeframe, he has arrested numerous individuals for delivery of controlled substances. He has worked with the Pennsylvania Office of Attorney General and other local departments to investigate nearly 20 cases involving trafficking large amounts of controlled substances into the community from large metropolitan areas. Detective Federenko was the lead investigator for several of these cases, including some which recently were sent to the Pennsylvania State Grand Jury, resulting in indictments on a couple of different individuals. So he did a fantastic job on that. And the last officer we're recognizing is actually a former officer now. Officer Mark Swindell also received a Police Commendation. I gave that to him on Monday on his retirement, his retirement party. But in recognition of 32 years of dedicated service, Officer Swindell, God love him, worked most of those on midnight shift. In fact, basically his whole career up until the last year he came to daylight. But was a fantastic officer, very diligent, did a great job for us. So we have a big void to fill. However, we do have his replacement here this evening. So a new officer, Adam Wolfinger, is stepping into the role for Officer Swindell. So I wanted to introduce him as well. But that brings us to our two officers who we have here with us this evening. Gentlemen, if you'd like to stand, please. So we have Officer Elijah Bardzo and Officer Rob Carter. They both tonight will be receiving the lifesaving award from our agency. In October of 2021, Officer Bardzo and Officer Carter respond to an address in Patent Township for the report of an unresponsive female. When they arrived, they found the patient unconscious but breathing. They administered her oxygen, but the patient's breathing became more labored and then ceased. Officer Carter determined that the patient had gone into cardiac arrest. He moved her to the floor and began chest compressions while Officer Bardzo gave rescue breaths. EMS then arrived and took over treatment of the patient. The female had regained a pulse and was breathing on her own when she was transported to the Mountain Dew Medical Center for more advanced care. It was due to the quick action taken by Officer Carter and Officer Bardzo that a patient who was in cardiac arrest was revived and transferred to EMS for more advanced care. Their actions reflect the highest credit on themselves and also on our agency. So congratulations to Officer Robert Carter. So congratulations to Officer Robert Carter. And also Officer Bardzo. Officer Bardzo actually has the distinguished honor of receiving this for the second time. So Officer Carter received the pin to put on his Class A, acknowledging the fact that he has a life-saving award. And Officer Bardzo received a star to place on his to show that he has subsequent safe. So, great job, gentlemen. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Chief?
Yes?
Could we meet the new officer? If it's okay?
Yeah, sure. Do you want to go, Adam?
Yes.
Sure.
So you don't feel left out? Welcome.
So Adam Wolfinger comes to us from Lakeview Town. He was an officer there for about almost eight years. Had a short stay at Penn State University Police, and we still went from there. So he's here with his wife and two kids, and really we're excited to get things going. He's on our FTO process right now, doing very good.
Field Training Officer.
I'm starting to live in there all the afternoon.
Yeah.
Yeah, he's doing a fantastic job, and we're really excited to get him up.
Thank you. Welcome. Chief, I'm gonna let you get.
Situated.
Situated, because the next, on the next agenda is public safety. And that's the February 2022 police report.
Yep. So you have a copy of the, the public safety report for February in your materials. You'll see we did 162 traffic stops, wrote 37 citations, and handled 12 criminal arrests. In our department notes, a 21-year-old female was cited for criminal mischief following an argument the female would damage her ex-boyfriend's vehicle. A 34-year-old male was arrested and charged with escape, flight to avoid prosecution, and possessing a small amount of marijuana. The male fled on foot after he was pulled over for a traffic offense. He was apprehended a short time later hiding in a local business. And while conducting the investigation, our officers learned that the male was wanted by the Center County Sheriff's Office for failing to appear for a court appearance. Our officers made five arrests for retail theft and one arrest for driving under the influence. They served one warrant of the eight they attempted and conducted 11 vacation home checks. We did use force during one incident in February. Our officers were assisting state parole agents who were attempting to take a male into custody for violating parole. The male barricaded himself in a room, and after negotiating with him for a while and de-escalating the situation, the male did unlock the door but then hid in a closet. One of our officers did point a taser at the male while he was brought out of, brought out of the closet and handcuffed. The taser was never deployed, it was just shown to the male. He was taken into custody without any further issues, though. There were no injuries reported by the male or by any of our officers during that incident. Community relations, Officer Tuskovich was busy speaking to a couple of different eighth grade health classes about drugs and alcohol, and also speaking to another class about unsolved cases and law enforcement in general. Officer Sunderland installed a child safety seat for one of our township residents, and they remained active in the school zones, of course, in the mornings and afternoons. Training and department activities, our officers had tactical response team training, and then all officers in the month of February received their annual update training, which is required by the state. The topics for this year's training included legal updates, understanding bias, use of force, control tactics, racial profiling awareness, de-escalation strategies, and a crisis intervention team update. And then I also attended the Children's Advocacy Center Advisory Committee meeting, and also the community and campus immunity meeting. We just talked about Detective Federenko's accommodation, so we can skip past that. We did receive two letters from residents, though. The first was from a couple who was a victim of a fraud. On one of their credit cards, they noticed there was some unauthorized activity, contacted the, our, our agency, were very happy with the response they received from Sergeant Sean Albright, just were very, very pleased with the recommendations that he gave to them and his compassion of how he dealt with them. So that was included in that letter. The second letter was from a parent of a Penn State student who was dealing with a roommate issue, was very pleased with the response that two of our officers went out and helped de-escalate the situation and the tension between the roommates there. And then lastly, we have our record list of our calls for service. We had a total of 390 calls for the month of February. That's down a little bit from January when we handled 428 calls for service. Of the 390, the most frequent was traffic. We had 71 calls for service for traffic incidents and 57 for health and safety for EMS. And that completes my February report, so I'm happy to answer any questions or...
Any questions from any of the supervisors? Seeing none, next on the agenda is diversity, equity, and inclusion reporting incidents of bias or hate. Chief, back in.
That's still me, yep. So I appreciate the opportunity to discuss this. You know, I think everybody in this room is aware that incidents involving bias or hate crimes are grossly underreported just across the board, across our nation. So we wanted to be sure that we try to get the information out the best we can on how people can, can contact us and, and kind of what will happen. So we do have a fairly robust site on our website that has a lot more information than what I'll cover tonight, but if you did go onto our website under Departments, and then obviously the Police Department, and then PTPD Against Hate is where a lot of, a lot of the information is located. But just real quickly, just so everybody's on the same page, what is a hate crime? So in Pennsylvania, a hate crime is defined as a criminal act motivated by ill will or hatred toward a victim's race, color, religion, or national origin. The crime for that in Pennsylvania is what's called ethnic intimidation. It's found in the Pennsylvania Crimes Code, Title 18, under Section 2710. But when certain criminal offenses are committed with a motive of hate, the crime of ethnic intimidation can also be charged along with that. So generally, the types of offenses to which ethnic intimidation can be added are called underlying offenses. These underlying offenses involve danger or harm to you and/or to your property. Some examples of what an underlying offense might be that, again, ethnic intimidation could be charged along with are harassment, physical assault, criminal mischief, stalking, arson, terroristic threats, things like that. So, but again, kind of the spirit of why we're here and what we're talking about is reporting. So if anyone feels like they're a victim of a hate crime, or even if you're a witness of a hate crime, and not necessarily we're the target of what the content might be, we ask if it's happening right then to immediately call 911. You know, it's much more efficient for our officers to be able to come out and to identify and to speak with both parties on scene rather than trying to maybe use a photograph to identify somebody or something like that. So if we have the opportunity to come out, it's just much easier for us to identify everyone, make sure they're separated, make sure everybody's safe, and then start the investigation from there. So if it's happening, call 911 immediately. If it's something where maybe it's been a day or two ago and somebody has thought, well, you know what, I really think I should report that, they're more than welcome to call the non-emergency line to the 911 center, which is 1-800-479-0050. And then a police officer will be dispatched to come out and to discuss the issue with you. Or you can contact us directly. You're more than welcome to come into our township offices here. Also, we have a couple mechanisms in online, so you can report the incident online, and we also have an option to remain anonymous if you just want to make sure we get the information. You don't have to necessarily put any of your, your contact information in, but we still want that information so we can track these and be aware of what's going on in our community. But our agency will not tolerate hate or bias of any kind. So if we receive a report like that, a thorough investigation will follow any, again, any report of a hate crime or any kind of bias. So it's just a little bit of information about how to get ahold of us, and we hope that, you know, people will see this and, and, you know, won't hesitate to call us and at least report it to us so that, again, we can track these and help them out any way we can.
Thank you, Chief. Any supervisors have any question for the chief on this? Seeing none.
I just, just if I can add, I think if people are living or the incident occurs in one of the other jurisdictions, especially in the center region, every, every department has the same sort of reporting functions.
Okay.
So if you go to Borough State College website, you'll find reporting forms. Ferguson Township will have the same thing.
Yeah. And, and if, if it didn't happen in Patent Township, and we get the report, we will absolutely be sure it gets forwarded on to the appropriate jurisdiction, and vice versa. So, yep.
Thank you. All right, moving on for C, the noise variance application for RE Farm Cafe. Doug, would you like to give us an update?
Yeah, I'll, I'll start this. We were approached last year by the RE Farm Cafe out on Fillmore Road. They'd asked for a, they asked for a noise waiver last year for weekends and several events that they were, they were having. That was granted with condition that the board, the township would notify residents in the immediate area, and if there were any complaints that we would revisit that, that waiver. There was a copy of the notice that was sent out, was included with the agenda materials. Happy to say we received no complaints last year from any of the residents. They returned this year some modifications to their, to their request. They're looking at a continuous waiver from May through November, from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I think the same. There will be amplified music, a number of tending 15 to 200. And I think the owners of RE Farm Cafe are on the, on the Zoom with us, Monica and Duke Gastiger. If you've got any comments you'd like to make, now would be the appropriate time to do that.
Well, thank you very much for considering this again. We felt like we had a good year last year. The music that we have is often one or two piece acoustic. We may have like a four-piece orchestra for a wedding, but in general, the music's a pretty low-key thing, and it's just when it's windy, it may carry on the air. But what we want to do is continue to be good neighbors, so that's why we're asking for this.
Thank you. Comments from Supervisor Abrams?
I think it's a sound idea that we move to approve this.
Any other comments from any other supervisor? All right, can I get a second?
Oh, I had a comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's it?
I'm just, I'm just following up on Mr. Abrams' comment, and I'd like to say on that note, Elliot, I'd, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the waiver, the request for the sound waiver for the entire summer, the dates listed.
Okay. Can I get a second?
Second. Third.
All right. Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any oppose, any extend? The motion passes. Congratulations.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
All right, moving right along on the agenda, Public Works Operation, There Is No Item. Moving next is the Engineering, Planning, and Zoning. The Planning Commission Report. Welcome Sharon Collins, the member of the Planning Commission. She'll give us our, the Planning Commission Report.
Everything, well, a lot of what we had to talk about last week had to do with the Toftrees Master Plan that, so this is the whole, a whole new part of the development, but it has all been approved way back in 87 and updated in 2017. So the first part of it was having to do with just some tax parcels, just some changes to the tax parcels, and everything seemed to meet all the requirements. It was just kind of trading a little bit from one tax parcel to another, and just a few feet here and there. So we approved all of that. Then the next item that we talked about was the Mountain Nittany Health Outpatient Center that is also in that community, and this is like the final land development plan. And mostly what we were discussing were the roadway and infrastructure. There were some changes to like some culverts and some discussion about lane widths on the, on the main road there. The, some discussions about the roundabout, and the gas line had to, there was some discussion about that, had to be slightly moved over a little bit. And the beneficial reuse line. And so the, the beneficial reuse line, I don't think that has been resolved yet. The gas line, that was resolved within the township right away. The culvert replacement, there's just going to be a little language added to development plan regarding, regarding the culverts. Lane widths were resolved, and they're going to be 14-foot lanes, and the township will maintain the grass medians in, in between. The roundabout design was resolved. It's modified so that buses, tractor trailers, and, and any kind of emergency vehicles can, can get around the roundabout. We're still waiting for a traffic update study, but I guess that's in progress right Let's see, what else did we go on to talk about? Medical building itself, there was some more description of that, and there was some discussion about the lighting on the, in the town center. I think for the most part, we, we moved to, to go ahead and, and send anything, send everything on, we, we approved everything and sent it on to, to the Board of Supervisors. And that's pretty much everything having to do with the Toftrees development. There was also Chick-fil-A wanted a land development plan that they presented to us for a second building, it would, and a second line for their orders, their, what do you call, the drive-through orders. And that would alleviate a lot of the traffic that, that builds up on Atherton Street. And so they went through all the descriptions they had with that, and we approved that. And then there was some discussion about a Ferguson Township official map update, but that really, that was just discussion. That wasn't anything that we moved on or, or, or sending forward or anything like that. So I think that covers pretty much everything that we discussed. Are there any questions?
Any questions from supervisors? Okay, seeing none. Can I get a motion to approve each plan that was recommended by the Planning Commission with conditional approval?
We, we need to go through and discuss these.
The whole thing?
Yeah.
All right. Next on the agenda is the subdivision plan to create two building lots, one stormwater management lot, and a right-of-way for new public streets. Doug?
Yeah, so we're going to cover, actually staff's going to cover both the subdivision plan and the land development plan because they really go together. I wanted to start and just cover some background material for folks. I mean, this is our first development in this part of Township, what we call Toftrees West. And this area includes over 600 acres. That's been zoned for many, many, many years for growth and planned for growth. Noted in the agenda, the first parts that Toftrees planned community were developed in the late 1960s around the golf course. Planned community zoning was fairly new at that time, much different than what we normally see in terms of zoning, where you have, you know, large blocks of residential and then large blocks of commercial. Community zoning was the first attempt at mixing uses in close proximity with one another. And then the other item that came out of the planned community zoning was the use of master plans. And we've really embraced that idea. We not only have a Toftrees planned community, we have an Oakwood planned community, and we have a Graves Woods planned community. So quite a bit of the Town, Patent Township is zoned for this type of use. And in terms of, and then we've taken that master planning concept, and we've extended it to other zoning districts, like the Planned Airport District, the Offer Buffer District Two, and, and what we've seen... Two, and, and what we've seen in the last few years, the mixed-use district, overlay district, which is the patent crossing development, we have a master plan there. The master plan's important because it gives us that long-term view of what's going to happen. And then we get to the land development plan, and we start filling in the details for what, what we're going to see. I think as Sharon noted, the master plan that we're working under right now was, the current version of it was approved in 2018. There were copies of that in the agenda. Just want to know that, again, we've been planning for this development for a long, long time. Back in, I see Tom Charles shaking his head, I think they've been working on it too. We maybe preceded you a little bit, Tom, because we, we actually, back in 2007, the board of supervisors at that time made a conscious effort and a public statement that our top priority for infrastructure improvements in patent township was to widen the Waddle Road I-99 interchange. If you remember back, back then, it was three lanes, and it, you know, it worked for, it worked for what it needed to do, but we knew that we couldn't support additional growth, especially in the Toftrees area, without an expanded, expanded interchange. So like we said, in 2007, we started looking. Over the next several years, we worked with Mr. Poole, Bob Poole, who's the primary developer of these Toftrees West properties, and we worked with PennDOT District TOO. We made trips to DC, we filled out a lot of grant applications, we did a lot of talking. And finally, in 2014, Senator Jake Corman was able to assist us and secure approximately $15 million in state grants. The township added $2 million to that, and we went to work on the project, and construction on that was completed in 2015, 2017. So that's the, you know, how did we get from, you know, 1960s to 2022? And, you know, I think in my, I'm glad to see this project, this project, I think it's an excellent use for this, for this property, and I think we're going to see some good growth come in that area over the next few years, once they get the road extended up in there and get the first building going. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our planner, Nicole Pollak, and she'll give you some basic information on the plan itself. And then Tony Fruchtel from Pantera Engineering is going to follow up with, with some comments on the plans, and then if you'd like to hear from Mr. Charles and Mr. Poole, they're available also.
Good evening, everyone. I am having a little bit of technical issues with my internet tonight, so I'm going to leave my camera off in hopes that you can hear me the best that way. As Doug mentioned, there's a couple of plans associated with this project. So the first one is the subdivision plan to create a couple lots and some stormwater management, as well as right-of-way for new public streets. So the purpose of the plan would be to divide parts of three existing lots into the breakdown that's provided for you there at the bottom of page seven. And then in the next plan that we're going to talk about, Lot Two, will be the Mount Nittany Outpatient Center. And then there's going to be some right-of-way for the roadway infrastructure that they will put in concurrent with that plan. So the recommendation for the subdivision plan from the planning commission, they do recommend conditional approval, provided that all of the comments noted on the comment letters are addressed. So then to go into the land development plan and the minor amendment to the master plan, kind of broke the conversation down into two major sections. We are talking about roadway and infrastructure with this, and as Doug mentioned, kind of a lot went into get the, kind of lead-in to this development and to allow this development to occur. So Masters Boulevard would be the main route into the site, and it would start at the Toftrees Avenue and Waddle Road intersection, creating a new T-intersection that would have a dedicated right-turn lane and a full traffic signal there with Toftrees Avenue. It will continue into the project site and then go into a traffic circle that will connect another length of road yet to be named that will come down along the medical office building. Both of these roads will have, one side will have its five-foot sidewalk, and the other side will have a 10-foot shared-use path that will be able to be used for both bicycle and pedestrians. And lighting is going to be provided along all pedestrian facilities within the town center. That portion of this site will be within the town center and the planned community district. So there's some additional information in there that Doug kind of mentioned a little bit with his intro about the infrastructure. And then kind of the second piece to this conversation would be the medical office building itself, and this also comes with a slight amendment to the master plan because it adjusts a portion of that town center. So on this, as with, as mentioned with the subdivision plan, the newly created Lot Two from the subdivision plan will be 20 acres, and it will house the medical office building for Mount Nittany Health. It is proposed to be a four-story building, about 126,000 square feet, and it will have outpatient rehabilitation facilities, laboratories, physician and administrative offices, and we just wanted to note that there will be no emergency medical services provided at this center. And as kind of mentioned already, there's going to be some additional infrastructure on the site with the access drives and the parking, and there will also be that 10-foot asphalt shared-use path for bicycles and pedestrians. There'll be some landscaping in there, as well as the site lighting that we mentioned. And the pedestrians will have access to the building from the public road, both entrances. And we're also going to get an easement, a new bicycle path connecting from the roundabout to the Bellefonte Central rail trail. So finally, with this, there would be a minor amendment to the master plan. The medical office building does fall within the designated area as the town center, and a minor amendment to approve, a minor revision to the approved master plan is being requested as part of this. It essentially shifts the designated town center a little bit to the east so that the, excuse me, so that the proposed development tonight falls wholly within the town center. There's no revision to the number of units or reduction in the open space proposed. So Alex is showing you there what the 2017 master plan looked like at the town center in that gray space, and how it's shifting a little bit. And then you can see kind of the outline of the proposed site for the Mount Nittany Medical Center building. So with that, I will mention that the planning commission does recommend conditional approval, provided that comments and discussion items are satisfied. And I do know that Mr. Fruchtel with Pantera will go over some of those discussion items with you in his presentation. So at this point, I'd like to turn it over to him.
So, good evening.
Good evening.
Tony Fruchtel with Pantera Engineering, or the site civil engineer for the project. Mr. Poole's with me here tonight. He represents the owners, the developers of the project. Also on Zoom is Mr. Tom Charles, and he represents Mount Nittany Health. And we actually were hoping to start with Mr. Charles. I think he wanted to talk a little bit about their goal and what they wanted to do and what this kind of facility is going to represent, and then we'll step back, and I'll come back up and talk about kind of the big picture stuff on the site. That's all right. So, Tom, let you go ahead.
Mr. Charles?
Tony, thank you very much. I'm just checking my audio. Can everybody hear me okay? Am I coming through?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Well, let me say, it's nice to see all of you again. It wasn't that long ago that I was here talking about another topic, COVID, and I can say at the front end of this, thankfully, we're in a bit better place as a community and certainly as a health system than what we were when I was in front of you the last time. So I, I think I said I look forward to coming and giving you a bit better news, and so we'll consider this a bit better news with all of that. I also just want to add my commendation to the officers that were recognized earlier in the meeting. It's just a great example of the critical importance of first responders in this community and their connection to life-saving treatment and, you know, being able to get them to us and enable us to do everything we can for members of this community, so that interconnectedness is very much appreciated and acknowledged. And thank you to the officers for their excellent work. So to this project, the essence of this project is it enables us to continue doing what we have been doing so successfully for this community for many years, and particularly in the last decade, which is recruiting and retaining excellent physicians to deliver medical care to the State College community and to the region. We have the largest multi-specialty medical group in this region. We employ, you know, more than 220 physicians, earth practitioner, physician assistants in a wide variety of medical and surgical specialties within the health system. They are the foundation for everything that we do and the front door to access for care in the community. We've grown so successfully that the short story is we're out of room. We do not have room to continue growing and adding these skilled practitioners to our system and to be able to serve the community. And for us to be able to do that, we really need to create an expanded footprint and more space, and that's what this outpatient facility will enable us to do. It is basically a physician office building. We have some limited ancillary services available here, and we also have some outpatient procedural capability, but for the most part, it really is a physician office building. It will enable us to grow a number of key specialties, from primary care to our medical and surgical specialties. We will be exiting some of our locations around town and consolidating some of our operations here. We'll be maintaining a number of other locations as well, but the key is it allows us to continue growing and recruiting and retaining practitioners for the State College community. We selected this location for a couple of reasons. It's a parcel of land that will allow us to continue to expand in the future. We really envision this as being, you know, a progressive development over time, many years, and it will enable us to have another second hub of activity. It is at the front end of what will be a very robust development, a great addition to the State College community. In many ways, this is the gateway facility to that development, so we're excited about its location and an anchor for, you know, the families and individuals that will reside there over time and be part of a more, you know, robust development plan, you know, as, was approved a number of years ago. This is a project that has been in the planning stages for many years. Prior to the pandemic, we were gearing up to do this, we were moving forward, and we were excited about getting going, and we've really had to hit the brakes for the past two years. And so from our viewpoint, this project is long overdue, it's past due, we're eager to get it going. We've been inhibited in our ability to grow some of our key specialties because we've not had enough space, so we're very, very eager to do it and introduce what we think will be a great resource to the State College community. The final thing I would say, this is a beautiful setting, it's a wonderful natural environment. We're eager to build a building that we think will be a great addition to the State College community, a great statement, but also reflective of the natural environments that we all enjoy and appreciate, and so we're looking forward to contributing architecturally, but also primarily services that will benefit the community. So that's my overview. I'd be happy to answer any questions about it, but it's critically important to the health system. We're delighted we're able to get back to this work, and we're very pleased about the investment we'll be able to continue to make in our home community here to serve all of you.
Thank you, Mr. Charles. Are there any questions from the supervisors at this time? Supervisor Abrams?
I don't really have a question, but I think this, this is, to me, this is a great addition to the community, this plan, and makes it even more important that we pay attention to what's going on with the State College connector, which is a part of the upgrade of the area from Potter's Mills to State College to a four-lane road. There are some in the community who want that four-lane road to be just like Atherton Street, stoplights all the way from the base of the mountain to here, whereas others, which I think a better idea is to have a four-lane road through there that, to interstate standards, to provide access to our hospitals, to the university. But State College is not even, State College Borough is not even in the official study area for that thing, nor is Patent Township or Ferguson Township. The university is not, the stadium is not, none of this is. And so it's important that the hearings that they're having during the end of this month, I think 30th, 31st, that we ask for a change to that plan that they have to include more of the region in the discussions about this. I don't have the answer to what the final path should be, but I don't want us to put an inferior road in when we're trying to get better access to the community.
Okay. Supervisor, agree with it?
Speaking of access, and I may have missed this, but I circled like two entry points and exits to this community, and looking over here on Waddle, and I just know, you know, Toftrees is already kind of horrible with traffic, especially with game days and even when, you know, parents, weekend and stuff, and just curious to hear about that part of this.
So I would, I would say, give me a couple minutes, and I'm going to talk about the site and the infrastructure and everything, and hopefully get, get to your questions, if that's all right.
Okay. Supervisor Whitman, do you have any questions?
I do, and actually, it's, they're more in the form of comments or observations. First of all, I'd like to, sorry, I can't, it seemed to lower my, anyway, it's not. I wanted to build on what Mr. Abrams said about, as in reference to the corridor in points east and making as many connections as we can, the various projects in our community and community at large. So I'm actually thinking of our community through time. I'm thinking, no surprise, of our community on a continuum of what we're doing for climate and making changes that will not only benefit, in the case of this facility, the immediate healthcare needs of our community, but the long-range healthcare needs that our grandchildren and great-grandchildren will have. It's certainly not going to impact me, God willing I'm around for 20 years, but climate change is, is long-term. So I was thinking, pardon, and I know that we, I believe that we talked briefly at an earlier meeting when this was first presented, and certainly the planning commission, and a number of people remarked, the first thing they see when they drive up Masters Boulevard is a parking lot, or maybe they see the building and then they see the parking lot. And it, of course, is no rocket science suggestion that the parking lot be covered with, with the cover and then have solar panels put on that. I know that's an added expense, I know that it's not in my place or our place to require that, or, but we certainly can suggest it. And I, I'd like to offer, in the same spirit that I offered a suggestion to patent crossing when it was first being developed, and that was that patent crossing, consider all of the plantings to be native plants, or the majority of them to be native plants, and to wear that as a, as, as an example of pride, of major contribution. Granted, it's also not as, as expensive or impactful as a solar array, but I would really like to, I guess, throw down the gauntlet, if that's a word, to, you know, ask Mount Nittany to somehow come up with the means to add that, a solar array, certainly an excellent spot for it in terms of, because the panels could be oriented anywhere, and there's no tree coverage, and of course, you, we, you have the excellent example of the solar array that is in the field, I guess, to the south of Mount Nittany Hospital. So I, I think this is a wonderful addition, and I thank you for the opportunity to express my aspirations for this community, and for what I think Mount Nittany could step up and be an exemplary leader in this community by something like that. Yeah, so I thank you for that time.
Okay, thank you.
And look forward to future developments.
Thank you, Supervisor Whitman. Supervisor Sabino?
Yeah, I have a pretty specific comment about your landscaping plan, but I, I can wait until you do your whole presentation, and then we can follow, our follow-up. until you do your whole presentation and then we can follow, our follow-up.
Okay. Is there another question, Supervisor? Abel?
I just wanted to follow up that the idea of native plants is important, and this week's issue of Science Magazine, they point out how native plants in many areas seem to be more efficient handlers of greenhouse gases than more invasive species, and so that's just another reason to go along with that.
Okay. Mr. Charles, I would just like to say thank you for your presentation, and as we're moving forward, I hear the rest.
Thank you.
Alex, do you have the plans?
Yes.
Yeah, let's start with that one right there. So, a real quick recap of the subdivision plans, so we understand kind of where this is at, what we're talking about. This is the Waddlewood, Waddle Road Bridge right here. This is the existing Waddle Road, Toftrees intersection. And the project would propose a road that creates that T-intersection Nicole was talking about that comes up into the site, up through here. This would be, this would be public right-of-way, the traffic circle that was shown, and the other public road is here, the 20-foot, or I'm sorry, the 20-acre area, the medical outpatient center would be this. There's a rectangular piece, about three and a half acres there for future development as specified in the master plan. So, just to review that, that one part of the project, it is the subdivision plan, it's separate. It's essentially just creating lines on paper to subdivide these separate lots. And actually, I apologize, there's a triangular-shaped piece right here that will contain a series of stormwater basins. Those basins are designed to capture stormwater from both the infrastructure that's going in here, the proposed medical office building, and future development. It's, we're looking at this as a whole, not a piecemeal, so it's, the environmental was taken care of kind of globally, if you will. Can you get a sheet four, Alex?
It's not in here, so.
Oh, okay. You know what, you can, you can leave it right there.
No, let's go to the land development plan.
Yeah, yeah, so that, so we can, just taking a couple of things Nicole said, just maybe a half step further so we understand. This Masters Boulevard is a boulevard roadway here, 14-foot lanes, eight-foot median, so there's, there's multiple lanes of, there's one lane of egress, one lane of ingress on that road, but they are separated. That's a traffic safety issue. That's a common feature that's put in for development so that there's always a second means to get in and out on that road. The traffic circle that you see up here, that was put in the plans many years ago. Traffic circles tend to allow flow to keep moving from an environmental standpoint. Folks don't tend to sit there and wait and wait, and as traffic grows, which will happen as this project develops, that traffic circle is designed, excuse me, to handle that development. It won't have to be rethought, it won't have to be changed. Traffic circles usually aren't used because they take up a lot of room. We have some room here to do that, so the township liked to see that, so we put that in. This, this road here, which will front the project, that's also a boulevard road, has 12-foot lanes and I think six-foot medians. So, that would form one leg of what will eventually be the rest of the town center in here. That'll kind of circle the whole way through the, through the future development. So, proposed utilities for the site. Yeah, so proposed utilities for the site, water and sewer both tie in right here at the Water, Water Road interchange. The sewer will come up Masters Boulevard, as well the water line. Actually, at this point, there is a 16-inch water line that comes through the property. It kind of goes cross-country through the woods there and ties into State College Borough Water Authority Tank on the other side of the project. This project begins the process of putting that 16-inch line in the roadway, so it will follow the road up to the circle, down in front of the project, and across what will be future road for the rest of the development. So, that was, that was understood by the developers, hey, this has to happen at some point. We're getting this, we're getting this line where it can be maintained. Telecommunications electric will come from the Waddle Ridge, Waddle Road Bridge area. The gas line for the, to serve the development actually comes down Toftrees Avenue. This was a talking point you've seen in your agenda. There's been some back and forth between the developer, township staff, as to where that's going to be located, so it's at an advantageous location if and when Toftrees Avenue widening takes place. Also, as Nicole mentioned, there is a 10-foot wide asphalt path that goes up this side of the road. That's for bikers, walkers, joggers, et cetera. Five-foot wide concrete sidewalk that goes up this side, they both go the whole way to the circle and across the front of the proposed medical office building. And there will be crossings put in at the circle so that future development, they can be expanded. The plan is for that 10-foot wide shared-use path to sort of circle the town center. Street trees are planned for both sides of both streets. We are in discussions with the township arborist right now about what those street trees should be, in the interest of making sure they're native plants, but also making sure they're diverse species. We know there's been issues with blights and such that can wipe out large areas of large, large stands of trees, so also to make sure that those species are appropriate for roadside development. They need to be hardy in a couple of different ways. Got to make sure the roots aren't going to be, intrude on sidewalks and the shared-use path and such. Make sure that they're not all, there's some diversity in the canopy and what they look like. So, we're working with the township arborist right now to just kind of make sure that those, those trees are appropriate for what they're intended to accomplish. Alex, can we go to the next sheet? There. So, here's the layout of the proposed medical office building, the outpatient center, it's a 31,500-square foot footprint, four stories, gets you 126,000 gross square feet of area. This area right here is the main drop-off. It's a dedicated patient drop-off area. It will be covered. The ADA spaces immediately adjacent to the building right here, of course, there's ADA compliant to get to the building, meets requirements for the number of spaces. However, there's an additional 18 spaces in this row that are ADA compliant, that are going to be signed for specific uses in the building, physical therapy, I guess, kind of being one of them. So, folks that need to park close can get there, you know, folks that require ADA compliant but don't have placards, they can, you know, they can still get close to the building. So, you can see the, you can see the parking, meets township requirements for parking. It's not shown on here, but these, these bays are stepped as you go back. Each one drops off, follows the contour of the land, and it breaks up the, you know, it helps as far as construction, but it also breaks up the kind of look. It'll step down, you're not going to look out and just kind of see this flat sea of parking there. There will be a perimeter, there will, of required buffer yards, plants, the native plants we talked about. There will also be internal plants and trees in all of these islands per township ordinance. The, there's loading dock on this side right here, trash, recycling, et cetera. They're all kind of tucked back in that little corner. It's kind of away from patient and patient ingress and egress from the building. The building's actually on two levels, so the front will be on a level up from the bottom, again, following the contours of the ground. That'll be level with the, with the street here. Access will be ADA from the street will be right there. There'll be a bike rack out front, so folks that are using that path can access the building and park out front there. There's planned to be some type of outdoor amenity area for patients and, I guess, employees in the building. We don't know exactly what that looks like yet, but there'll be a big lawn area in front there, so that's, that's kind of the presentation for the town center that's going to be there. So, that's, that's kind of what the, what the building itself looks like. There were a couple of discussion items as part of the review by the planning commission. I just wanted to review those real quick. Beneficial reuse line, this is a request to put a line in from UAJ. The condition there was that it gets worked out. We're not really sure what gets worked out means. We sort of have a request for, depending on what the, that condition may or may not be, and whether that gets attached to the plans or not, we can certainly discuss that. Taking, moving on to the next item, the roundabout, that was just working with township staff about how big that, that circle is. We've made it big enough to accommodate a CADA articulated bus. It can accommodate Alpha's biggest piece of fire equipment, a WV62, that's a fancy term for a tractor trailer, semi-trailer. They can all get around that thing without getting on that landscape island. It's, it's almost twice as big as the circle in Gray's Woods, just for perspective. It's, it'll be okay. The gas line is along Toftrees Avenue, we talked about that. That was just finding the proper location for it. Culver under Toftrees Avenue, we're adding some language to the plan per staff's request. Just if that gets replaced, as this project's taking place, the developer will participate in the, in the cost of that. Lighting in the town center, that's the, the shared-use path up around the hospital area there. We have lights shown on the plan. We just don't know exactly what they look like yet, and by that I mean, how tall are they, exactly what the features are. The path will be lit. We're working with Alex to make sure that it's, it's appropriate. And, let's see, what else do we have? Oh, yeah, lanewits on Masters Boulevard, there was a request to widen those, and that was done. It's just, when you're driving up through there, it gets a little narrow if you've got curb on both sides and median, so they're widened. It'll be just a little bit easier to drive. And traffic impact study. The first study that we had submitted had, there were some questions about what the numbers were. They didn't quite jive with some previous studies. Our engineer has, traffic engineer reworked those numbers, got those back to the township. They're working on them right now. There's one or two other, a couple other coordination items, but I think, and I'm not, township staff is satisfied that we're at a point where we know where this thing is going, we just have some, some coordination to work out on that, and they can certainly comment on that. So, I know Mr. Poole had some conversations with UAJ about the beneficial reuse line. Bob, did you want to talk about that at all?
Didn't get, he never called. You have the most knowledge, Bob.
Oh, yeah, I hope, right. That's Bob Poole, the developer, owner of the, of Toftrees. Yeah, on the beneficial reuse, Corey and I had a discussion today, and I, as I said, the planning commission, you know, I mean, we're unable to contribute towards it. We're, we're happy to have the beneficial reuse line go up into Toftrees. We had asked for, to see what is the return on investment, or what's the analysis to be done. It hasn't been done yet. So, from, from the conditional, if you're looking at a conditional approval tonight, I would need to have that condition not be part of it, because financially for us, as you can see with everything Tony went through, we're going to have a tremendous investment in this piece of property to even get into it so that the medical center can build a facility. So, I did have a discussion with Corey. I said to Corey, I'd be unable to do it. He said he was going to give you a call, Doug.
Okay. Anything else you want to talk about?
I, I think the sense is, and, well, let me, to date, UAJ has run the beneficial water line out to several projects, and they've incurred the whole cost of it. So, they've gone to a couple of different golf courses.
Center Hills.
Yeah, Center Hills, thanks. I don't play golf, so I don't know golf.
The old Elks.
Yeah. They're currently on the process of running the line all the way out to Tussie Mountain, which will eventually be used for making snow out there. So, we talked with Corey, and he had agreed to at least bring the beneficial reuse line to the intersection of Waddle and Toftrees, and then we were going to see if there was some way we could, the three bodies, Patton Township, UAJ, and the developer, work out some sort of means to pay for it, to get the line extended up along Masters Boulevard and then the new road in front of the medical office building. I, I think in terms of, we'll keep, we'll continue talking with it, with Corey. Mr. Poole's made it, Corey Miller, who's the executive director for University, to join your for UAJ. Mr. Poole's made it known that he doesn't plan to participate in the cost of it in any way, so I think the next question is, back to Mr. Miller with UAJ, is would they be willing to, after they brought up the two or three miles from the plant up to the intersection, would they be willing to rent it the next 3,000 feet or so to get it installed? I, from township's point of view, our first priority would be to get it installed when the initial construction is going on with this project, because it'll never be any easier, any cheaper to do it. And if we can't get to that point, then at least reserve the area in the right-of-way so it can be installed at some point later on. And if we have to put crosspipes in, at least do that or something. So, I think if we want to put a condition in that, you know, we, that a spot should be reserved for this, for the, for the piping to go in, I think we can then work, continue to work out some of the other details with Mr. Miller, or I can continue to see what we can come up with, with Mr. Miller on actually getting it installed and report back. But in terms of the land development plan, we could just have a condition that says, reserve a spot in the right-of-way for it.
And I said, and I said to Corey, he was the head of UAJA, in fact, I even said that we have no, we have no problem while, while we're there, even installing it for him. It's the cost of the installation and, you know, and we actually did ask for an analysis, which I think you have not seen yet, we have not seen yet. So, the question is, the idea sounds good, and my other question was, if you run it all the way to Center Hills, and you run it all the way to, to the Wyndham, and you run it all the way to Tussie, and you paid for all that just for some, some use, and you have 700 acres here potential that we're going to have, why would you not run it, it's 2,400 feet? Why would you run it a couple of miles to get there but not run the last 2,400 feet? Because the beneficial reuse you look at is a benefit to the whole region, the concept. And, and so, when we, you know, and everything else staff has asked, we do, the 14 feet, I mean, all the stuff, because we believe in it, and I think you see by Patton Crossing, we're not afraid to put the money and to do it right. And the same thing here, it's going to be a phenomenal development, it's going to be great for everyone in the community. I just feel that was a request that probably was, I mean, you know, somebody wants to pay for it, but I'm not sure it was fair to ask us to pay for that, and I didn't want to put it in as a condition, because then that, it's a condition of approval, which, which doesn't make sense. But the reservation and all, because I, I think the idea is good, and I'd like to see, I'm not sure who will, and, and I said to Corey, if, example is, is the medical center, if you want anyone to consider using it, you're going to have to give them some sort of beneficial, you know, some analysis to show them that it makes sense to spend that money to do it. And they just haven't been able to do that yet. I'm not saying they, I'm not saying they won't, but if you were coming to me and saying, Bob, would you put it in your store, would you put it in your home, they're going to want to say, well, what's my cost, but when do I, is there a payback? Four years, three years, five years? Because I think it's, I think it's a good idea. I think it's good for the whole, whole region to do it, but.
So, do we have a cost? How much it would run us?
Elliot's got a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Elliot?
Does part of this issue involve the term beneficial reuse? I think that Corey has shown that it's as pure and safe to drink as drinking water that comes out.
He says more pure, more pure.
Water Authority, but the, the state continues to call it sewage.
Yep.
And if it were actually potable water, that would be much more attractive in this area.
Correct.
Than its current designation. So, I can see why you wouldn't want to pay for it now if it's not designated correctly, but we'd want to allow for it to go in, and, but working out the finances of it would have to come later, I guess. have to come later, I guess.
And you're correct, as Corey said, it's actually better drinking water than we have here currently, but it's, it's a thought process, and you're right, it's, it's, it's not approved. So what happens, that means you have to do some additional work within the, whether it be the home, or the, the building, whatever, to be able to handle that from, let's say, a commode or toilet type situation. So, there is some cost to it, and so, I think most people are gonna say, "Well, what's the benefit back?". The benefit to the region is good, because it, it preserves, as you know, putting the water back into somewhere on a golf course, whatever, is better than putting it in the street. So the, the, the use is absolutely a good idea, and I think you're right, I think that down the road, if, if they want to install it, I think it would be okay, but I, I have no problem at all with the, right, you know.
Mr. Rob asked about costs, that's me, you'd, you'd worked up something.
Yeah, I actually, yeah, I asked Corey that, it's about eighty dollars a linear foot, for instance, so in, in a twenty-four hundred, what is that, a hundred ninety, a hundred ninety-two thousand dollars?
Well, if you gotta run down the rural mains, the street, so about three thousand.
You're correct, yeah, yeah.
Quarter million dollars.
Yeah. No, you're right, Doug.
Any other supervisor have any questions?
Glad there's more to be, I'm trying to follow up.
I do.
Okay, Supervisor Whitman?
Uh, yeah, sure, thanks. Um, John, or Bob, you, I don't know if you know the answer to this, is there any, Bob, you talked about what are the benefits for the reuse, certainly on the community level basis. Doug or Bob, is there any benefit to the individual consumer in the cost of using beneficial reuse water over using the regular water?
Betsy, I think the problem becomes, you're not allowed to use it as domestic water. It's actually, D E P. has not approved it.
Yeah, let me, let me address it. There, there are several uses that you can use the beneficial reuse water for. Primary one around here is irrigation. The golf courses, snowmaking obviously is very, you know, they haven't been doing it. It could be used for laundries, I think there's a laundry out in the Dale Summit area that uses it. The one area that we had talked to, that we were talking to Mr. Charles and Mr. Poole about, was using it basically as the heat sink for heating and cooling of the building. You know, if you're familiar with the geothermal type of.
Yeah, for sure.
Heating system, well.
Yeah.
The water in that pipe is the heat sink, or the, it, it works like a geothermal unit. You can either, you can extract the heat from it, it's at a constant temperature of fifty-five or sixty degrees, so you can extract heat from it, if you need heat for your building, you can extract cool, or you can use it to cool air, if you're, if you're cooling your building. But the analysis that U A J. was gonna provide was, you know, given a hundred twenty-six thousand square foot office building, if you use the beneficial reuse water for, for heating and cooling, what would it save, you know, how much savings would a owner, we're still waiting on those numbers, that's, that's the analysis that Corey said he'd provide us and, and hasn't been provided yet.
Okay.
You know, and, and quite frankly, without that analysis, while we all think it's a great idea, we don't have any number that we can put to it. So there, you know, if, if it came up and it said, you know, Mount, the Medical Center can save a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year on heating and cooling costs, I bet we'd get their attention, but, you know, I'm, I'm thinking it's not that number, because we haven't seen the analysis yet, so.
Okay.
So I think, you know, we'll keep pushing the concept. Like I said, at this point, you know, the, probably the best option is to get U A J. to agree to run it all the way up there, or at least, we'll figure out how to compensate Mr. Poole if we have to, or something like that, to get it in the ground, but, you know, at, at a minimum, reserve the area for it, so, and put crosspipes in as needed, so when we get to a point. The other things it could be used for, just, I, you know, you can swell, you can fill swimming pools with it.
Yeah.
You could do, if we had a water tower out in this area, don't, State College Borough Water Authority's not listening, if we had a water tower, another water tower out in this area, we could, we could actually use the beneficial reuse water for firefighting. We could all hook all our fire hydrants up to it, and use that water instead of potable water. So, I think at some point in the future, we need to have, start having some more serious conversations with the State College Borough Water Authority about the community benefit of, that they start looking at beneficial reuse as a community asset instead of a competitor, but that's a conversation and a discussion for another day.
Gotcha. Thank you for answering to the extent you could. Thanks so much.
Supervisor, Supervisor Abrams?
I've always been fascinated by this discussion about the beneficial reuse water, it's been going on for more than a decade. I keep thinking to myself, growing up in Philadelphia, where they were pulling water out of the Delaware River, and purifying it, and that water had been, had come down from the Allentown area, Lehigh Valley area, and parts of New Jersey, all the sewage plants that are upstream from there, and so they were essentially reusing water that'd come out of sewage plants that hadn't even had beneficial reuse, and then supposedly purifying it, and then running it through lead pipes, which is a different issue entirely, but, but this idea of purity, why can't, I can't understand why somebody can't settle this. I'm not an expert in this, but if somebody says, "This water is more pure than the regular water you're already drinking", and D E P. says, "We can't use it because of X, Y, or Z", let's work this out.
Okay. About the period?
Can you just explain the conditional stuff again, I'm trying to.
For just, for the beneficial reuse, or all the, all the conditions?
All the conditions, I'm sure.
Well, let's see if Mr. Poole, if he can wait till Mr. Fractal's done here. Are you?
Well, no, I mean, did you want?
I'll, I'll run through the condition.
As you say, I think the question you're asking is, outside of beneficial reuse, all the other discussion items, we've either resolved or we're okay with between staff and everyone, so that was the only issue that was an outstanding one. I think that's what you're asking, what's the other?
Yeah. So, yeah, typically, almost every plan you see, we're gonna call what we do conditionally approved. So it, it will meet all our standards if they make these following last changes, so those are the conditions. A lot of those conditions end up being the items that come from the staff's review letter, so if you look at, you know, what was in, what was provided for the land development plan, there's, I think, several pages of, of notes, of comments that, you know, one to seventy-two from the November eighteenth. So when staff originally got this plan, they looked at it, they, they came, they compiled all these comments, that these are all the things that need to be done to this plan that was submitted back in November, to make it compliant with our, with our regulations. And then the developers did that, they sent them back, and then staff went through and, and checked everything, so anything that's checked off has been changed on the plans. You'll see that the items that are labeled D. are the things we're discussing currently. You'll see there's, there's some items, like number nine at the top of page two, it's M T., that's minor technical, means that the developer hasn't quite made all the changes to the plan, but every, but they've agreed to do them, and we're just, there's something else that needs to be done to the plan to make it compliant with that regulation, and, and it's gonna get done before, I'll talk about approval process a little, it'll be done as, as, it, it's one of those conditions of approval, that they have to finish all these M T. things also. So, like I said, staff runs through all these, they either get checked, or they get marked D. for discussion items, discussion items come to the Planning Commission and the board to see if there's any more additions. Sometimes discussion items involve varying interpretations of regulations. Sometimes there are things like township's asked for this, it's not a requirement, but it's a request. In the grand scheme of things, we can only require things that are required within our own, own rules, we can't require things that aren't in our own rules, but we can ask for So that's the conditional part of conditional approval, so as staff, as we noted, you know, the recommendation is to conditionally approve the plan, with all those, complete all the items noted in the staff comment letters, there's also generally, there'll be third, a, third, uh, third party, but other agency comments will sometime, will, will get, will get included, I think we had Council of Governments, stuff on recycling, State College Borough Water Authority, so at the end of the day, all that's, all that stuff will have to be done too. So in terms of the approval process, you've, the point that we're about to go into where the board will consider action, really is only about two-thirds of the way through the whole process. What will happen after the board, if the board would conditionally approve this pro, this project, these plans, with the conditions as noted in the plan, then what happens next is the developer, well, we will send a letter to the developer, it'll go out, it usually goes out the day after, it says, "You now have fifteen days", or something like that, or fourteen days, thirty days, something.
Yeah.
"You have thirty days to either accept or reject these conditions."
Thirty.
What?
Forty-five.
Bob, probably.
Forty-five.
No, anyhow, so, from your action, that letter gets generated, it goes to the developer, says, "You, do you accept or reject these conditions?". And I will tell you, ninety-nine percent of the times, they will, because we've worked together to get to this point, they will sign that letter and say, "We accept all these conditions of approval." And then they go through, and then they go start making the final changes to the plan, and that sometimes can take two or three months before they do all those things. And they may have some other permitting issues that they're dealing with, with D E P. or PENDO, or some other agencies, but they will finally make all those, they'll tell us they made all those changes, that we're in those conditions, they'll send us another plan, staff will sit down with the, the comment letter again, and the set of plans, and they'll go through that comment letter all over again, saying, "Have they really addressed everything on this plan that they said they were going to address?". And check, 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 and until all those things are checked off, their plan still is not an officially approved plan. It's still a conditionally approved plan until, like I said, once they've satisfied all the conditions, made all the changes to the plans that are required, and staff has checked it and made sure, that's at the point where Pam, you get to sign it. So all that work's going on in the background, and then, it will get to the point where they made all the changes, Alex and the zoning officer and the planner will say, "We've checked everything, everything's good, you're good to go, you can get your, you can get your signatures on the plan", then they'll circulate it, they get, have to go back to Planning Commission and get the signature, Planning Commission, they get Pam's signature, and then usually I'm about the last one to sign, just in case something else happens, but I'm the secretary to the board, so I sign it also. And it's only at that point, and there's one step they have to do after that, that they have, they have an approved plan. Excuse me.
It's the phone.
Then, the last step they have to do is they have to take it down to Bellefonte, and give it to the county recorder, and actually record it with the county recorder, so that there's a public copy available for anybody, and it's only at that point, then they can start going out, and, they can't even start the building until they have that plan, because they can't get a zoning permit until they have an approved plan, so. Like I said, so this part, this is about two-thirds of the way through the whole process, they've done a lot more work, they've probably been working on it for two years or more. But, just to give you a sense of how the, how the whole workflow goes on this, so, any questions on that at this point?
Supervisor, Elliot?
Ramble on.
I'm, I'm actually ready to make a motion that we approve this on, on a conditional basis, but I do have one question first, on the roundabout. There are several, I can think of several roundabouts. The one, for example, on Old Gatesburg Road is great, because there is not that much traffic there. And, there is one, I imagine that the Gray's Woods Elementary School is also working okay. But suppose you had one of those at the entrance to I ninety-nine on Route twenty-six, and we just, the football game has just ended, nobody would ever be able to get into that circle, until all that traffic had gone through and around there, because you have to wait until the other traffic is going through. I don't see that happening here, but we, but for example, if all the employees at the medical facility were to get out at the same time, which they probably wouldn't, and there aren't that many of them, would that hold up that circle?
Uh, no, based on traffic impact study, there could be a lot, there can be a lot more traffic put in that circle, and it will still function at an acceptable level of service, meaning, it will be slower, for sure, and I'm not sure that we're ever required to use a football Saturday as our, as our standard for whether traffic can function or not, but it actually will function better than a, a standard either stop controlled or signalized intersection, once you get the more traffic in there, so that's, yeah.
Supervisor Trevino?
Yeah, let's take a look at page eighteen of the, of your development plan, it's the landscaping plan, Alex, if you can find that page. This actually sort of follows from something Betsy Whitman said before about native plants. I'm looking at the, the buffer area on the east and south of the parking lot, that, you know, open space there.
Yes, okay.
Is the development plan to?
Where?
Yeah, well, Tony already pointed to it, yeah. Yeah, well, between the parking lot and, and the, the lot boundary, is all that open space going to be clear cut, and then you're gonna put perimeter trees on the lot line? Because right now, you have all these native plants, you know, in that whole area, is it necessary to completely grade all that?
There, there will be grading in this area here, yes, there will be grading.
So that will have to be graded?
Yes, so that, because that goes down to, there's basins, and that, you know, it, it falls off right there, if you, when you go up that road.
All right, I understand, if you have to grade it, then you can't leave what's there. What about the south side?
This, this area was put in to be on the perimeter of the property.
Understand, but between the parking, the edge of the parking lot and that.
Yeah.
Can that be left native? That's my question. If you don't need to grade it, can you leave it native with what's already there?
That's a fair question, Dan, if you go up there now, the trees there are down, they, they, they were, they were taken down.
Clear.
Two years ago?
Yeah, two years ago.
Oh, it's already been cleared?
Yeah, yeah, yes.
Okay.
The area, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions from supervisor at this time?
Two times waiting for.
Are you waiting?
He's waiting up for a reply from me about conditional, the conditions for this plan?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll go through quickly what, so the minor, so the, the conditions are, on the land, on the subdivision plan, I don't think there really were any un, unaddressed items, so they've addressed everything on the subdivision plan. On the land development plan. On the land development plan, um, there still are several items, um, the minor technical items that, that they will, they will agree to do. So the conditions that the Board may want to focus on is, uh, the beneficial reuse. So the Planning Commission said leave it to the developers and U.S., UAAJ for resolution, which in my mind takes it out of the town, it's not a township issue anymore. It's, it's, it's those two parties to decide what they're going to do. I would say if you want to, you could leave it that way, or, um, you could leave it as revise that condition to, uh, reserve space in the right of way for it. So that will, will, will put a line on the drawing that says this is where the beneficial reuse line will go, and we don't want to put anything else on top of that. Or you could drop the condition at the bottom. So those are the options.
Yeah, the, the, either drop the condition or the right, again, we're going to, we're going to work with Corey if he wants to, because what they'll do is, um, they'll put, because the water, the, the Water Authority does not want beneficial reuse line near them. So it's kind of interesting, but anyway, so what, what Corey would do is he would actually put the sewer in and then come up probably about four feet and then put the beneficial reuse line on top of it.
Well, that's what he said, but we haven't seen that. I haven't seen it either, so I'd just say, let's, let's reserve the area for it.
My preference would be, because you can see there's so many question marks on this, I, I, and I think at the end of the day, if it makes sense to everybody, it's going to work, like anything. Uh, my preference would be is not to have that condition on there, because when you put a condition on there and you can't figure it out, what do you do? And that's why it doesn't make sense. Um, I mean, everybody, I think everybody's in agreement that let's try to figure it out. And I think, you know, I've been around long enough to know that if I say something, we're going to try to work on it. And I told Corey that, Corey and I have had a long, long-term relationship. But if you put this condition on as a condition, and we can't meet that condition, can't come in clue, what, what do you do?
Okay. Supervisor Trevino.
Then, um, I guess I need to ask Doug, since this is only two-thirds through the process and they have to come back again, uh, is it possible to remove a condition? Uh, if we put the condition now, tonight, and say, yes, you have to reserve a place for a beneficial reuse line in your plan, and then whenever they come up with their final plans and they, we have not worked anything out with UAAJ, can we then, the Board, remove that as a condition?
They would have to come back and ask you, ask the, the developer could do that, could come back and ask you to remove a condition. It would be an amendment to the ma, to the master plan. I don't, I think at this point, we wouldn't have to go back to Planning Commission or anything, since we've had a pretty, pretty good discussion of it.
Bob or not?
No, no. So if, if, if you want to, because even, and Doug's right, I'm not, that's Corey's idea. I don't, I don't think he's actually had it figured out yet either. And, and so I'm, I'm, I'm okay with in a right of way, we're going to provide to put it in, if they want to, if they want to put it in there, absolutely. I, I just don't know, I know the Water Authority doesn't want it near them, I don't know what near them means. So we have a certain amount of space in there, and if we put it in there and it, it doesn't work, I don't know what you do, Doug. Um, I, I, the, the problem is there's such a, there's, there's a lot of unknowns right now on, on, on this. So, so I'm happy either, one is ideally is to leave it out, because we'll still, we'll figure it out one way or the other. Or second is, I'm, I'm okay, Dan, you said, you know, have it within the right of way that currently is going to exist, and if it doesn't work out, then we'd, we'd have to come back and just say that it doesn't work.
And that's all right with you, Mr. Paul, that we go with the Supervisor Trevino?
Yeah, I'm, I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that, because I think the goal is.
Then let's move on, let's move on that then.
I got, I got one question.
I'm sorry.
That's all right. I just want to get an, an answer to what it is. I, we talked about a couple of its. One of the its was, um, to put, to ask the developer to put the, um, beneficial reuse water line in. The other it was to simply reserve the space. So, uh, is your most recent it referring to, um, the, um, essentially leaving space available for the beneficial reuse line? I'm just confused about definitions.
No, no, that's fair, Betsy. The, the two, the two requests I had was either to not have it as a condition at all, or reserve within the right of way, um, uh, the ability for UAAJ to put it in.
Okay, so, so the it is just the, um, reservation of space as opposed to the line itself?
Correct.
Thank you.
Can we say right of way or easements?
Yes.
It's my job.
Yes.
And the, and the issue too right now is that who's going to pay for it? Is that where the hangup is right now? Who's going to pay for it?
Yeah, 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 I, yeah, correct.
But, but, let me ask one more question, because I get it.
Supervisor Whitman?
Oh, sorry about that. I get it that somebody needs to pay for the line, but what is the cost of reserving space? Is there any downside to reserving space? I want to make that.
There's, there's no cost to reserve it, it would be within the easement or the right of way, as, as Tony would say. Um, yeah, and then the cost, what I'm saying to UAAJ, the cost of all the, um, installing materials and all is on UAAJ. It's their expense.
And then you had mentioned it.
Supervisor.
Sorry.
Supervisor McGruder.
Yes. And then you had mentioned if y'all incur the cost, you had talked about renting potentially, who would be paying that rent? Would that be?
No.
Okay. I missed something.
No, and, and that's where Doug made the comments probably, good, UAAJ and the Water Authority. The Water Authority, um, still, the, the system is they, they still want to be paid, because if you're not, if you use a beneficial reuse, let's say you go where you can use that, that means you're not using Water Authority water. So you're not paying for that. So, and, and part of what they have to work out is there's a kind of a double hit there of a charge. And then part of the analysis is say, if you're going to pay, UAAJ and UAAJ has to pay to, to Water Authority, um, what is the benefit back to the person actually using it? And that's, I think that's what they, and, and I think Doug is, is accurate. They, they probably, the numbers that they're running probably is not showing the benefit to the user of, of the, of the beneficial reuse. I don't know that answer exactly, but I think that's what it is.
What is the pleasure of the Board right now? Supervisor Abel?
I'd like to move to the motion to follow the Planning Commission's advice to get.
Exactly what you want. Can I get a?
I'll second that. But.
What, what's the?
Make sure we all understand what the motion is.
Yeah, what is, yeah, what is that motion?
Yeah, I think we need a little more specificity, please. For all.
I don't have any more meat for it, but I agree.
Yeah, because they made, they made, they already made it, they made it only a condition to talk to UAAJ. It didn't, it, all these, I, I don't want, I don't want it to be a condition of, of the approval that we have to come to an agreement because.
Oh, okay. Well, what I'd like to see is that that area be reserved.
Right. I'm okay with that.
And it's to be determined later, once this is figured out, uh, who, who all pays. Probably we haven't, we don't have any idea right now who that's going to be, and so you can't answer it, and, and to, to stop the project because of that, uh, hold, just holds it up.
Yeah, I think, well, I think to hold a project up of this caliber and, and what Mountain Indy has done for this region is, you're right, it does, it makes no sense at all to do that. I mean, the amount of physicians that have come into town, Doug, the, the difference is the cost.
I'd like to second it. I'll second that.
Yeah.
We're, we're in discussion right now, um, Betsy.
Have we had a second?
Yeah.
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 Yeah. Trevino.
I didn't hear. Okay, thank you. Sorry about that.
Oh, you didn't hear it? Okay.
I didn't hear the second. All right.
Supervisor Trevino.
Uh, let me do, also get clear, so we know what we're voting on. We're voting on the entire package, including the things like the, uh, creating the two building lots, uh, you know, all the things that have to be done in prior to, to make this, uh.
Yeah. So the land, yeah, the subdivision plan, the land development plan.
Approving a package.
And the minor amendment, yes.
But we're not approving the individual buildings yet. We haven't seen the.
No, this would approve the buildings. Yeah.
So the, and the beneficial reuse, the, the condition that we're, we're okay with is reserving an area, not working out the cost at all.
Correct.
Because then it causes a problem coming back. Okay, okay. Yeah, okay, Dan, I, I agree.
So Supervisor Trevino?
No, yeah, that satisfies me.
You satisfy?
I understand what we're, we're approving here.
Okay. So do we have to re-vent since we have all the packages together?
No, I think you can just, I mean, the motion is to approve item 6B1 subdivision plan and the 6B2, which is the land development plan and the minor amendment to the master plan.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? Motion passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Tony.
Oh, you got the tick for that?
Oh, I just want to thank you also, and really appreciate the staff did a phenomenal job working through this whole thing, because it has been over a couple of years. When we come here, it seems like it's just maybe yesterday, but it's, there's a lot of work put in this. I really appreciate your efforts and, and your support in this. And I'll, I'll speak for Tom, because I don't know if Tom still won, I know Mountain Indy Hospital really, really appreciates, so, a vote of confidence.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely. I want to add my thanks to that as well. We really appreciate the collaborative work and the ability to move it forward. It's fantastic.
Thank you. Okay. And if it's all possible, we will be taking a five-minute break.
Yeah, just, just quickly, I will say, in 2007, I was, uh, in, uh, high school.
All right, we're taking a five-minute break. Thank you. All right.
Uh, Ms. Pollack will introduce this plan.
Okay, Nicole.
All right, so the land development plan for Chick-fil-A, the site is located at 1938 North Afrington Street in the general commercial district. Chick-fil-A Corporation proposes to add building additions to the restaurant to expand the kitchen and the drive-through fulfillment area, implement a dual-drive-through lane, and add ordering and meal fulfillment canopies, and make some stormwater management improvements. In December of 2021, the Patent Township Zoning Hearing Board did grant Chick-fil-A Corporation a request for a variance from relief from the rear and side yard stepbacks and from the requirements of replanting in those stepbacks. And as a condition, the applicant will maintain in good condition a solid fence along the rear property line. And the full findings from the zoning hearing board are attached with your agenda tonight. The Planning Commission does recommend conditional approval of this plan, provided that completion of all items noted on the staff comment letter, as well as completion of all comments from the Center County Conservation District. And I do believe that we have some representatives here from the Chick-fil-A development team. So at this point, I will turn it over to them.
Thank you, Nicole. My name is Tyler Prime. I'm the attorney for Chick-fil-A on behalf of the project.
It turns out, just a little bit.
Can you speak up a little bit, Tyler?
Sure, yep. Can you hear me now?
Yeah.
Better.
Thank you.
Okay, yep, sorry about that. Nicole did a pretty good job on the overview. She's correct. We're proposing essentially some site upgrades. We're proposing a small building addition, a drive-through addition, and reconfiguration, as well as canopies for the meal delivery area and the ordering stations. Essentially, all of this is really meant to increase the efficiency of the site. As everyone's aware, this is a high-volume location, and we're looking to kind of speed it up, increase the efficiency of the site, modernize the site, and just overall make it more efficient. The kitchen upgrades inside, there will be no additional seating. It's all kind of in the area that the customers won't see, adding additional capacity and upgrading and modernizing the kitchen. The upgrades to the drive-through, so when you have the additional food being prepared and moved out, the additional drive-through will get the cars through the site in a quicker manner. So really, that's the purpose of the upgrade. That's the purpose of the project, and that's the end goal. The objective is to kind of increase the efficiency on the site. So I have Justin Thornton with Colliers Engineering and Design. He could talk a little bit about the site plan, and then otherwise, we could just take questions, any questions or comments that the board or your professionals might have. Thank you.
All right.
Thank you, Tyler. I assume, I assume the board would like me to kind of go run through the site plan and the changes we're making.
Yes, please do that.
Sure. Do you need me to share my screen for the site plan, or is that something that the township was doing previously?
You can do it.
Go ahead. Yeah, you can go ahead and share yours, Justin.
Sure. Just bear with me for a second. Is everyone able to see my site plan?
Yes.
Awesome. I appreciate it. All right, so as Tyler mentioned, our whole goal here is to make our site more efficient. As everyone's aware, it's a busy location. We overflow our drive-through lane perfectly, so we're here to try and resolve that situation. And in an effort to make this site more efficient, we're taking a look at, I'll call it, three or four different operations here. One is just the outrunning stacking ability and the number of cars that we can stack. We're looking at the ordering area and how we can take orders in quicker. We're looking at how we can produce the food quicker, and then also how to get it into our customers' hands quicker. And by doing all that, that will essentially make the site more efficient. So to start off with just the sheer, I'll say, stacking ability of, you know, a volume of cars, we'd like to take what currently is a single-lane drive-through lane and convert it into a dual lane, completely around the building. So you'll see, and I don't know if you can see my mouse moving, but around the perimeter of the site, you'll actually see two full lanes going around the building. We do narrow it down to a one-lane exit, just so we don't have to lose any additional parking stalls in that area. But we do carry two full lanes around the building. So currently, where we have room to stack a dedicated 15 cars in our current drive-through lane with the ability to overflow, you know, four to eight, depending on how you're counting it on the site, after this is done, we'll be able to store about 45 cars in our drive-through lane before we overflow anywhere. So we're more than doubling that capacity. The second aspect at our ordering point, and you'll see, there's a gray rectangle. Again, I don't see my mouse moving, but kind of towards the rear of the building, right to the right of the building in the drive-through lane, you'll see a gray rectangle. In that location, we're proposing a canopy. That canopy is there so our team members can take orders outside more efficiently, safer, and it also has more weather tights. That canopy will protect them from the sun. It'll protect them from rain, snow. It has radiant heat underneath it. It's got fans underneath it. The whole purpose there is, I'm not sure if everyone's familiar with Chick-fil-A, but in a lot of locations now, you'll see team members outside taking orders with an iPad. And that canopy is so they can do it in a safer condition than just standing outside, you know, in the hot sun or in the rain or cold temperatures. They'll have some protection from the weather there. The canopy also makes it more aware to our customers that something different is going on there because there are lights under there. There's bollards under there to protect our team members. So the team members that are in that hatched area, there's bollards at the beginning of it, you know, just kind of force cars to separate. So that whole purpose there is so we can get the orders into our kitchen quicker. And then we're going to do something similar where we pick up the food. Right to the left of our building, which is on the east side of the building, you'll see another gray rectangle, and that's another canopy as well. And that's so our team members can work outside there and deliver food to more than one car at a time. Currently, at the Chick-fil-A, there's a pickup window in that area. We are switching that out to a pickup door. So the top of the door can slide open still and act like a window, but the whole door can also open up so team members can go in and out. So we would have multiple team members stationed out there to deliver food to, like I said, multiple cars at once. And then that last section that Tyler mentioned about the building addition, we are proposing a building addition, and again, another gray rectangle in the rear of our building. We're proposing a building addition there, and there's a real small one. It's honestly only about 30 square feet by our drive-through pickup door area. And the purpose of those two building additions is, one, to increase the size of our kitchen, and, two, to increase the size of our drive-through cockpit area so we can actually have the room for our team members, or more team members, to work efficiently in delivering the food. So with those building additions, we're not, as Tyler mentioned, we're not getting any additional seats in the area. In fact, we're most likely going to lose a couple of seats in the remodel, but we are not going to gain any new seats. The whole purpose is to increase our kitchen capacity. I mean, that's generally the overview of what we are doing. The majority of the parking lot, like the flow of the parking lot, is going to remain the same. We are losing 11 parking stalls to fit this second drive-through lane in, but we do feel that the benefit of the longer drive-through lane outweighs the loss of parking. I mean, anytime I visit that site right now, the stalls that we're taking out, I can't even usually get into because the drive-through lane is usually blocked. So we do feel this is a big benefit to our site. It was mentioned, we do have a review letter, and we do agree that we comply with the items in that review letter. We have no issue with that. I'm happy to answer any questions we have on the site. We also do have a traffic engineer if we need her to help answer some questions as well.
Okay, any of the supervisors would like to ask questions at this time? Seeing none. I just would like to make a statement to Justin. I have been to the Chick-fil-A in Atlanta, and it's set up exactly like this. And the traffic moves quite quickly, so I'm looking forward to seeing this in operation.
Justin, can you stop your screen share, Justin, so we can? Thanks.
Somebody stopped it for me. I appreciate it.
Okay, Supervisor, a.
I'll move that we approve the, whatever we need to do, like with the last one with the condition of the
With the conditional approval.
Minor and technical items, et cetera.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Discussion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes with the conditional approval.
Thank you for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the Ferguson Township official map review. Doug?
Again, we'll look to Nicole to introduce this.
Okay, Nicole.
Okay, so per the Pennsylvania Municipality Planning Code, Ferguson Township is giving Patent Township the opportunity to review its official map update. The draft of the official map that you have presented for tonight is an update to their official map that was last approved in October of 2017. There's also a letter that came with the official map that discusses the goals and objectives and policies of the 2013 Center Region Comprehensive Plan, and it includes that it's not limited to open space and transportation. So on the official map document that they have provided, the first inset map shown at the top left of the screen release better shows the changes that are closest to Patent Township, and there are two main changes to note here. Devonshire Drive is now going to be shown as a bikeway as they have added the sharrows to that drive area. And the Valley Vista path has gone from a proposed facility to an existing facility. There are a few other minor changes to bicycle and shared-use facilities and open space in the rest of the township. Staff finds that these are positive changes to the community and in accordance with the 2017 Center Region Bike Plan. The Planning Commission did review this at their March 14 meeting, and they did not have any comments to provide. So we are at this point looking to the board if they have any comments they would like to be relayed to Ferguson Township.
Okay, open it up to, any supervisor have any comments or feedback on this? Or questions for Nicole at this time? Seeing none. Thank you, Nicole.
You're welcome.
All right.
Good work. Arm maps look better, right? Said arm maps look better, right?
Next on the agenda is the appointment to the Patent Township Order Authority and Industrial Commercial Development Authority. Doug?
We have item 7AA on the updated agenda for the CADA local shares.
Yes, I'm jumping the gun here. Yep, sorry. Moving back for administrative, we're in 7AA, new items, CADA local shares and funding formula. Doug?
Yes, ma'am. Today's just a preliminary look at this. This will also be on the agenda for our next meeting on April 13. This letter was provided from the CADA general manager, Luanne Oliva. I received it later on Friday. They are looking at, asking for feedback on several items. I'll just, they're bulleted there. The open circle is on page 15. And what I asked the board to is think about other information you might want beyond what's provided in the letter. So the three items that CADA is looking for input on is, first, the process that they go through for getting approvals from municipalities on the local share, the local share amounts. I think the first thing is, everyone, it wasn't clear 10 years ago, but I think it's abundantly clear now that CADA is not a COG program. There used to be some very intertwined efforts between the two communities, but CADA is an independent authority. It is not a COG agency. It's not a COG program. There are members to CADA who provide funding, and CADA needs to go around every year and get a resolution from each of those municipal funders for their local share. The next item is reviewing and revising that local share allocation formula. It's probably, unless you are dealing with CADA budgets and all that very frequently, you may not realize that the amount of our, that the amount of the local share that CADA requires from municipal members is not based on how much service they provide, but it's based on how much money is available from the state and federal governments that can, that CADA can collect. And then CADA has to have a local match of 5% to match all those state and federal dollars. So the local match that is in CADA's budget then is 5% of that very big number from the state and local government, or from state and federal government. And then that local amount then gets divvied up between the member municipalities. Then that's based on service, how you divvy up those items that are supposed to represent service in the different municipalities. Currently, it's, I think, population, number of stops, and miles of bus route in each municipality. With moving to CADA GO type of micro-transit services where we don't have fixed routes, we don't have fixed stops and everything, we can't use that formula anymore. So the question is, what should we, what should CADA look for as a new formula to do that allocation? They are suggesting that we form a committee of, that's municipal managers and somebody from Penn State Transportation that would then go work on that, that change to the funding formula and bring something back for discussion by the CADA board and the municipal bodies. The last item then is increasing the share for this year. Again, with mid, you know, being where we are in pandemic, not having any really good numbers for the last two years on ridership that have any relationship to anything that was before. You recall last year, we, the local share went up 5% across the board. CADA is again recommending or suggesting that for their 2022 budget, local share is just increased by 5%. So like I said, at this point, this board doesn't need to make any final decisions. I've asked Ms. Oliva to be at our next meeting on April 13, and if there's any questions... I've asked Ms. Oliva to be at our next meeting on April 13, and if there's any questions or information that you'd like provided at that meeting, let me know now, or send me an email in the next week or so, and I'll relay all that to Ms. Oliva so she's ready to comment on those things.
Any questions from any other supervisors? Okay, Doug, we'll get back to you on that. Moving on, draft resolutions to establish reformer policy for adding items to published agenda in accordance to Act 65 of 2021.
Yes, so this is a policy statement that encompasses what we've been doing since September of 2021, all that, not all this information, but we, every meeting started with three very long, very long and detailed paragraphs about adding agenda items. I think we've all gotten used to that process at this point, so I'm suggesting that we can condense that greatly, probably include the, if the resolution is passed, include the resolution as an attachment for a few more months, and then I think at some point we can drop that. We'll be very used to the process, but this is as a means of shortening the agendas just a little bit, and I've put this together for your review and potential approval.
Okay, Supervisors Abe.
Move approval?
Second. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The resolution passes. Thank you. Moving on to 7B, appointments to Patton Township Order Authority and Industrial Commercial Development Authority. Doug?
As you recall, we've determined that these authorities can be dissolved at some point in the future. Given that, we haven't made any appointments or reappointments to these boards over the last few years. I figured we'd get to this point at some time. The Director of Finance Administration, Larry Pager, told me we need to have a functioning board because we need to make a couple of resolutions about, to update banking information, authorize signatories. I have recommended that we appoint the board, you board members who are members of the board supervisors, to positions on these, on these two authority boards, and you can take action as needed to take care of these items. We could simply have a very short authority meeting either before or after a regular board meeting. I've suggested different folks to fill different terms. These are to match up current terms on the board with terms on the authority board. So nobody's, would be on the authority board after their term on the board of supervisors. So if the board is, concurs with my suggestion, I suggest you approve that motion. That's included on page 16.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve?
So.
Can I get a second? Second. Recruiter. Discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. Moving right on is consent agenda. Doug?
Seven items on the consent agenda as shown on page 17. Four, nobody has a reason to pull one. I suggest the board consider motion to approve the consent agenda as shown.
So move.
Second.
Second. Okay, discussion? Seeing none? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? The motion passes. Moving right along, next on the agenda is manager's report. Doug?
A few pieces of correspondence, just to make you aware of. Every spring, Penn State has an outdoor concert near where the Blue Band Building is. They all, they provide us notice every year, so we're aware when it's going to be, so it's called the Moving On Festival. We've never had any issues that have come to my attention. They said it'll occur, free outdoor music festival beginning at 3:30 PM, ending at 10:30 PM, and sound checks on the night before, so let everybody know that. Provided you some information from Department of Environmental Protection. We've provided you a few updates in the past. This is on the PFAS groundwater investigation that's going on in Benner Township. There was some more information that came out from DEP about that, and then I had received another email, I can't remember, not too long ago, March 16. Somehow it didn't hit my box until, but it got included with the supplemental materials. They are doing some testing at 35 private wells this week, checking for PFASs, and then they'll do, if they have any exceedances, they'll do confirmation testing also, so we'll continue to provide updates on that issue. Again, it's in Benner Township, but it is fairly close to Patton Township, so we're keeping residents in that area of the township informed. And then there was development update by the zoning officer was included. Under announcements, there's been a, for the Meeks Lane Sewer Project, UAJ's moved the schedule back. I don't know if you recall, originally, they were talking about going to construction this summer. Now they're talking about beginning construction November of 2022. They're still going and getting, they need to get their Act 537 plan approval yet, and have some permitting and right-of-way issues that they have to take care of, so that project's been moved back several months. Pickleball, the, recall, the board extended the current hours for pickleball at the last or the end February meeting until the Burnell Road courts are ready. We've been told by the contractor for that project, Miller Sports Construction, that we are quote-unquote "first on their list." But what, the material they use is an acrylic material that goes, needs to go on the asphalt court out there, so it's very weather-dependent, temperature-dependent. We don't expect to see them before mid-May, and then that project will probably take three to six weeks, again, depending on weather. So the courts at Green Hollow Park will remain open until those courts are done at Burnell Road Park, and once they're done at Burnell Road Park, then we'll close the courts at Green Hollow, and then the contractor will come back and, same contractor, and convert those pickleball courts on Green Hollow, in Green Hollow Park, back to tennis. As Elliot had mentioned before, the State College Connector is having public open houses on April 5th and 6th. There's, go to the link that's in the agenda, it'll take you to the PennDOT's website. I think Elliot is correct that we want to get as many people from Patton Township involved in this process, too, to take a look at the alternate routes and the style of road that may, that may be, that they may be looking at out there. So if you have questions, you can contact us, or you can contact COG and talk to the MPO folks at COG about this issue, too. Yes, sir?
Well, the main concern I have is that it's called the State College Connector, but even State College isn't even in the official study area. I think they need to expand that. And if they don't, they're only, regardless of what we say, most of the comments will then come from the area, not in the State College part of it.
Correct. Yeah, if you were around 10, 12 years ago, the last time this went through, it was, there's a lot of different opinions about where it ought to go, mostly not in my backyard, so. That's announcements. Oh, and then updates is events. Township offices will be closed April 15th and May 30th. PSAT's conference next week. Household hazardous waste collection is April 29th and 30th. You need to pre-register. Again, go to Center County Recycling and Refuge's website, or click the link there in the agenda, and you can pre-register for household hazardous waste. Bulk waste is May 9th to 13th. Center gives May 10th and 11th, and primary election, May 18th. That's the end of my report.
Thank you, sir. Moving on, next on the agenda is committee reports. Is there any supervisor who would like to add to their report at this time? Supervisor Torino?
I don't need to add anything to the reports you've already been, the copies are already presented, but I'm also now on the COG Parks and Recreation Governance Special Committee, which was, is tasked with reviewing the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority, governing documents for the authority, and it's the relationship of the authority to COG, Recreation and Parks Agency, and to the municipalities. And we had our second meeting this morning. We're, Doug, we're now meeting Wednesday mornings, fourth rent day of the month at 8:30, so you can start adding that, you know, the, today's meeting primarily was focused on education, familiarizing all of our board members, board members, sorry, the committee members, our committee members with all the different regulatory documents that are at play here, you know, the state law for authorities, establishing authorities, and what they're, what they're able to do, what they're not able to do, that sort of thing, and other regulating documents, you know, memorandums of understanding between different groups and ordinances passed by each municipality related to the relationship of the municipality with the Center Region Parks and Recreation Authority. And if you recall, when, a month ago, I said that this ought to come with college course credit, and I still think it should because the, the amount of information here trying to, we're asked to assimilate is quite extensive, although, so today, basically, we just went through some specific questions. So what is an authority? What is the authority permitted to do? What is the authority not permitted to do? What are the, is the authority appropriate kind of an, of a entity to be in charge of this? And what do we, meaning the municipalities, want the authority to be doing, and what do we maybe not want them to be doing? So we're setting the groundwork for continuing discussions as we go down, work our way down into the details of specific activities, specific operations, how do you divide it up? Because, you know, there's still a lot of confusion of what is the agency, COG agency, doing and responsible for, because they, they have the staff, the ones who take care, they do all the operations, yet the authority has some temporary staff as well, and seasonal staff, and do they, you know, what kind of operations do they manage? Those sorts of, we have to burrow down and work it all out, and then come back to the municipalities and say, these documents need to be updated in these ways, you know, current existing ordinances, municipal ordinances, bylaws, all that stuff. So to be continued.
Okay.
Lloyd, you're doing this.
Thank you. Any other supervisors would like to add to their report? Betsy? Are you okay? Okay. Mr. Crew, Mr. Abrams. My executive report, we met yesterday, so it will be on the next meeting. Moving right along, is there any other comments from our supervisors at this time? Or Supervisor Abrams?
Just one, I'm going to be away from May 10th to 24th, and June 17th to July 1st, so I'll be here for the second meeting in May. I think the June meeting, that'll make me a problem.
Okay, June 17th.
I can go on Zoom from the beach, but.
Okay. But what were the dates again?
May 10th to 24th, and June 17th to July 1st.
Got you. Doug, did you get that?
Yep.
I'll be going the 17th to the 21st of May.
Okay, the 21st.
That's two people will be.
All right. The 21st, to what?
17th to 21st.
Got you.
Our dogs that are being housed, but I don't think our dog.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Next on the agenda is to adjourn. Can I get a motion? Can I get a second?
Back up.
Is there a discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I hope nobody opposed. So without further ado, thank you, everyone, and this.
Bye, y'all.
This meeting is now adjourned.